John Whitehead.
Here.
Ronnie Everidge. Terry Douglas Stewart.
Here.
Chief Tom Tebby.
Here.
Ryan Rader.
Here.
President, you know the president.
We do regular minutes, committee meeting minutes, executive meeting minutes on July third. I make a motion to approve Jameis Washford in planning commission until four one twenty twenty five. Current and other commission members.
Yes, Dan, yes, Ron, yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Okay, your appointment, I like to point out, want to the planning commission, they will take it from even on the.
I'll make a motion to approve Jameis Washford in planning commission until four one twenty twenty five. Current and other commission members.
Yes.
Ken.
Okay.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Okay.
Of course you do. Oh, I have been reading some of the things on our Illinois American Water. And I would like to know if possibly that we can do some research on. Line or fifth day one, but to see what kind of brands are out there. To put things together that maybe down the road this could happen because. Home next raise that they're getting the lowest payment on water bills for me seventy five dollars. That's for minimum use. I don't see anybody being too happy about that, but is there any way we can? I know we got a lot on our plate right now, but let's make the plate a little bit bigger. Just the research is can we do that? Just research brands, anything to see what it might.
Off the top of my head, I don't think that you can do with that.
Federal, state.
Well, we could.
Yeah.
I would tell you it's probably a long shot at anything. Um, because it's normally there's not brands to help people pay their water bills until they're just doing the. Other situation, but it's not insane to try and look at the chairman conceiving chairman's departments specifically.
I think she's asking to do a study on.
On building. How to get a water plant. Yes.
We're still looking into, I got an email today from Senator Harris on. So there's possibly there's still, we might be able to use that grant that she got us for that gift. There's been some conflicting things on that.
There's gotta be things out there.
We could do the original study. I think we have to reword it or something to fit. Is that true, Tamara? Are there ones that are?
I know it has to be that fifty thousand dollar grant has to be used for a bondable project and a study is not.
It's not a big.
Did we ever have a study? You know, back when we decided not to do anything about it back in the day?
Well, we had twelve million dollars and we didn't do anything.
We had, we had that lined up back in about two thousand seven eight somewhere during when I was still working, I had that. About twenty five thousand dollars for the study too. Brian was leaving that in during company on the nation.
Core range associations.
Core range, they put it all together for them. The water district did too.
I mean, we got a lot of people out there now.
What about tip money for the project?
To build a water clean? If it's in the tip boundary, uh. No, you can't build a new building with it. So I, I don't think we could, we've got a way to do that, but.
The last meeting we had was there was a one percent loan through EPA where we could try and pursue is the last that I knew. And that's been a couple of months ago and we were waiting to see if we could use that grant that we got that we can't now. That fifty thousand dollars we thought would help us through a partial study or something. So now we have to go back.
You know, we gotta be tired of paying these people all this money and all they do is.
Well, they have certain deal.
You know, and we don't have any idea of what's this year, what's next year? Seventy five dollars is a lot of money.
Seventy one.
Time out.
Okay, anybody else?
I'm not sure I'm in the right area, but I'll throw it out and you tell me from the hammer or not. A few months ago, I attended a meeting in here whenever Bill, I, by the way, I lived in the Villas at Tanning. And a man by the name of Craig Stoner came in here asking. Whoever they were in front of that he wanted to. An easement. He had an easement problem with bills out there. He wanted ten more feet forward. And they approved that ten feet for him to move that up. I fought it here at the meeting because his statement in that meeting was. The only person that's gonna have a problem with this is the person in eight oh one seven, which is me. And I was here and I talked about it. I was having water issues in my yard. From day one, I've lived there six years and I fought this for six years trying to get this water out of my yard. Well, by that easement being approved, he's now building four villas. Up above me, okay? And I do understand. City of Caseyville saying, you know, that's four times tax money. I understand it. Okay, I'm not, I'm not here arguing that. But the problem is, and I told him at that point. The steepness of the hills and why he's building, the sump pumps are just kicking water out of those new buildings. And they're running downhill. They come into my yard. Well, my yard filled up with mud. Then it filled up with water. So I, I fought this and I fought it and fought it trying to keep him. He put up one of those little silk fence up there. It went around that and nobody's house came in my yard again. So I went to St. Clair County and the people that. Deal with signing off the final sign of those villas came out and looked at it. He said, this is not very good at all. The steepness of those hills, all the water is running down into a common area and into my yard. My feeling is, is that I should not have to deal with water. From some other yards into my yard. So I fought it and fought it and fought it. Because I knew eventually it was gonna cause me a problem. Two days ago, when we had that big rain, my problem came here. The water came down by the house. It filled, he had dug footers around there and left it. Four feet deep and finished it yet. Those filled up with water and mud. Then it came into my yard. So he's over there working, trying to pump stuff out and it wasn't working. So I walked out there to tell him that my egress window can't handle this. And before I could tell that, I looked, I ran over and the water was three, four steps up my window. Of my villa. Then the window exploded. And all of that went into my basement. I am currently right now working a server problem. They're, they've had fans in my basement in the floor. I guess three days and so now I'm kinda at a point where I, I'm, I'm coming to you for two reasons. Number one is, is I fought this and fought this and fought this knowing that this was going to happen and it did. The second reason why I'm here is, is I need somebody. From city of Caseyville to keep this problem from ever happening again. And he tells me it's gonna be two, three months before he can solve any problems out there because he's way behind in the building process. So I'm, I'm in about sixty eight hundred right now. And I'm figuring I'm gonna be in about eleven or twelve grand while they're, when they're done. And this all could have been prevented. He said he would not have built on that property if that easement wasn't approved by the city of Caseyville. Once it was approved, he started meeting and instead of building two, he built four out of that easement permit. And now those four, all the water from all four of those are coming into my problem. So I, I guess I'm extremely frustrated right now that. All of that fighting that you, you know, it just went wrong and here I'm in world hurt.
Can I give you my quarter and get your name and address on the back so I can check this off whether.
Sure, absolutely.
Remember get that and fill it out and give it to me, buddy.
There's a lot of runoff out there, Brian. I mean, I mean, can't. We take in like mainly the sump pumps, at least run them, have builders run those to the sewer. And then I don't know, you still have the gutters and all that, but if that's. If it, you know, the downspouts and then they're running, I don't know, they gotta be routed a different way maybe, or. You take the sump pumps that are pumping out a lot of water and run those to the sewer.
If you can't run it to sewer, you run it. Or the storm sewer.
Storm sewer.
He can't, he can't dump water on your property.
Yeah, it's not working.
And that's, that's what happens.
Gutters.
Some of this was gonna be a private action when you and the neighbor in Homewood, that's not necessarily a village issue.
I understand.
I appreciate that. And I'm pretty sure with the variance and un-easement, the variance, um, allowing to build, and of course, that was, if the building is going to go to that too.
He needed ten more feet. And if he didn't get the approval. Of the city for that ten feet, he wouldn't build there. Or when he got it, they started going immediately and he put those four there and.
He moved them forward. If it's the area, I remember we went out there and he moved them, he moved them ten feet closer to the street.
To the street.
Yeah, so that they could build, yeah, they were so close to the back where probably they.
But the reason why that was done and why he wouldn't build there is because he would have had to run in lots and lots of dirt. To make things work out properly. And he didn't wanna do that. So he said he wouldn't build there. He put up a retaining wall and that's what he was telling you. He put up a retaining wall. Well, the two of it on the top hill, when they, when the sump pumps kick all the water out, comes over the top of that wall. And there's mud on the other side of that wall that's going to the catch base. There's only one catch basin there for about fifteen, twenty villas, one. So all of the water from all of those comes into one catch base. Well, the two that he built on this side, there's no retaining wall. So he put that self fence up to keep, get the water go. I got video of it blowing over with water twice. And he come back out and rebuild it, come back and rebuild it and they stuck bales of hay up there. I tried telling him at that time that the bales of hay had nothing to do with my yard. That's the common area. Okay, what was coming in my yard was the water coming off of the top of the other two villas. Down into the park around the basement that he left four feet deep. The water with, and mud that fell up in that and then when it overflowed, that came into my yard. And when he overflowed my yard, it then came into my egress and then passed.
Now, I'm gonna do a tiny movement.
Okay, I'm sorry. Should've gone over and I don't think they might be weird. I, I would just, the only thing I want to say is, is, you know, I've given you this, I've given my information up. Would just like for somebody in the city to contact me in some way or come out and see. Exactly what I'm talking about so that I can make my.
Can you just, what's your name again?
Michael Guthrie.
I'm sorry, what was it?
Guthrie, G U T H R I E. And I'm in eight oh one seven, Vill Valley Lane.
Vill Valley?
Vill, V I L L A, Valley Lane.
Okay, thank you. Sir, I just went on there the other day, you go, that is on the board when we voted on you doing this and they guarantee, I made to say this out loud. They guaranteed him that they would not destroy this property. They guaranteed him because we questioned that.
Just to be correct, the planning commission didn't, or not, so the DEA didn't guarantee and the labor guarantee, right? Never cooked that money from the first, they approved it and nothing happened.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, you should, I don't let off on you if you would, so I have that, so I have the.
I'm sorry.
Do we have any other resistance to number? No, we didn't do business. Uh, Ron? Motion to approve or deny resolution one four dash thirty nine. A resolution authorizing maintaining the confidentiality of all events, closed meeting minutes. Where closed meeting itself by the board of trustees and appropriate committee, I make a motion to approve that resolution.
These are the ones from. The last week, right? These are the ones you reviewed, okay, must have been. Okay.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
All right. Uh, Ron, how did you? Motion to approve or deny resolution twenty four dash sixty? A resolution to approve the annual road line. I'd like to make that, um, motion to approve that resolution.
Sir. Matt? Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Okay, motion to approve Senator Erica Harris. The use of the community center free of charge for their high cash events on Wednesday, October second from one to four. I'd like to make that motion to approve that resolution, sir.
Matt? Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes. Ken? Yes. Ron? Yes.
Uh, city board?
Mike and Ron sir?
None. Ron, to the building. Uh, general fund fifty six thousand eight hundred twenty three dollars twenty eight cents. Fire protection four thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars sixty two cents. Community building one thousand three hundred sixty nine dollars twenty two cents. I M R F a dollar forty nine. Motor fuels four thousand two hundred eighty eight dollars thirty eight cents. Parks, six hundred sixty eight dollars twenty five cents. Water, twenty two thousand six hundred ninety nine dollars fifty six cents. DEA seizures and forfeitures. Six hundred seventy one dollars ninety nine cents. Stake for pitcher. Five hundred thirty one dollars fourteen cents. Tip two, one seventy nine twenty seven. Tip four, two thousand three hundred fifty two dollars. Cemetery, one thousand four hundred seventy dollars. For a total of ninety five thousand eight hundred seventy two dollars and twenty cents. I'd like to make a motion to draw up my proper accounts and pay the bills.
Thanks. Yes. Yes.
Um, yes.
Ken? Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Any? We? Yeah, there's a, just a couple of things. Um, first of all, uh, yesterday, everybody, uh, likely is so concerned about. Uh, everything on levy, just to let you know, contrary to very bad information on Facebook, if someone. We know for a ability who has no operational knowledge of what we do. Uh, we did have a drone up in the rain. It does fly, it's flying. Um, and we were monitoring the drone. With the street department, uh, most of the day, often. Uh, so I again find it necessary to tell you. Don't believe some of the fools on Facebook who's, uh.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, but yeah, so it does fly low in the rain. It wasn't raining, it's all good. Contrary to what some fools says, uh, also. Uh, just so the council knows, there's another thing on Facebook. We do not have night vision goggles. Uh, as again, somebody who posted down there that we bought night vision goggles about all the city congresswoman six thousand dollars. Uh, Kent, that was that, uh, one guy we talked about that you brought to my attention on Hollywood High Road. Uh, who's disturbing neighbors that have a lot of the lights and all that.
Oh, yeah, he's a credit.
Yeah, yeah, so he believes we have, uh, that he pulls down over and we all have six thousand dollar.
I didn't miss that one.
I, well, yeah, so did I, because I have my six off of the very.
Oh, we lost the drone, we got a piece of the rain, so we can buy the goggles.
Uh, I just kinda found it, uh, as I do sometimes, I just found it kinda necessary, uh, to tell you, uh, how that we have put each other, uh. Uh, the drone and.
We're gonna be looking at.
Absolutely, absolutely. Uh, I just got all down over the day, so, uh, yeah, just let me know when, absolutely. I can, I can show you how to watch, but I can't show you how to fly.
If Jeff's still the only.
Uh, we got two guys who are in training right now. So, uh, we'll have, we'll have two to four. We got one that already got training on the drone. So we have Jeff and one other, we got two others that are going. So hopefully we'll have, we'll be able to do it soon. But, uh, Jeff was very excited about that. We checked and gave it a day for management. Uh, and so, uh, it's become viable, so we got a lot, we got a lot of, glad to show you wherever you guys got time. If you see when it's a little long. Uh, so basically that's all. I just wanted to put out some of that. Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Brian?
Uh, continuing with what Chief said, you know, got some damage on the, uh, by the trussel again. Put a large table over the levy over time again. And just what Gary had said, our engineer that's doing the study, did a presentation for us at the last meeting. Exactly what he was saying happening, it's happening. So we'll just clean up tomorrow there. Have the street department out there doing, uh, cleaning out underneath the levy or underneath the trussel. They're doing a storm sewer last week and cleaning today. Have the street sweeper out from the storm. Uh, let that up will be probably try to do a little bit tomorrow, but give everybody a weekend and, uh. We do let that up Monday, Monday morning. So if you get my. People you thought maybe know that will be out Monday for sure. They don't live in yards. Well, they bring them to the front by the street. Water and sewer, and even some, uh. And selling new water services and do maintenance on the, uh, on stations. Police department, new building, police department's pretty much, probably last time I gave a chat.
All right.
You didn't say the furniture was hard to put together today.
Cause I'll find out if there's one right in the hall before you, if someone shares not. I have a drawer, yeah, hopefully it's a drawer. Um, so, uh, the conversation related to the rainy volume yesterday. Um, for those of you that didn't see it, the poor was actually out on the levee multiple times yesterday. Um, some of the senior leadership, um, actually came down and was being flown around in a helicopter. It wasn't a real time action, it was happening here, um, in all the communities downstream, so they have a better view of, uh, and understanding of what we're facing on a regular basis. Um, coincidentally, I had a pre-planned meeting with the congressional delegations this morning. I talked to their offices. Um, and those staffers themselves were out driving around in that range trying to take pictures. Uh, and they were actually out on Black Lake, uh, on, uh, OKC the road, taking all these photos so that way they can upload documents and after the senior leadership. Uh, sorry, I'd be grateful for that. Um, the core, um, Colonel Reeder, we actually met him here about a month ago, uh, me and the mayor and Brian, um, sat down with him. Um, he's actually going to, uh, he's sending out an invitation for all the mayors in the affected area. There's eleven to thirteen of them. Um, he's gonna do a sit down with them, um, explaining what the core is doing. Um, we are now invited to speak. Um, so I will present the spring lake project. We actually discussed that, so we'll present that there as well. Um, the, uh. The plan is becoming a little bit more, um, clear. Um, you know, I would tell you that. By the end of August, we'll be coming back with a governmental agreement with the hope that the board approves, uh, sort of, with all of our neighbors. Um, and actually getting this spring lake project off the ground. Um, and I will, uh, over the next couple of weeks, I will have more information to explain, send to you to explain how, um. How exactly that will be rolled out, uh, um, the affected properties, those kinds of things. Um, but the, the shortens we do that is again, we have six to seven hundred acres of water, you know, from that breach happened yesterday and over top, it already went that way. So we're just trying to take advantage of the natural plant elevation that's up there, so. Uh, so all those efforts are gonna continue and will be ongoing. Um, and I encourage. Um, any of the board members, um, or any resident that wants to sit down and understand what we're doing, I will gladly sit down with them like Brian will feel well. Um, just reach out for us and put that motion. You know, I, the speaking, I do have a, working these on the board, though I do have a conflict of interest. With the emails that were going around with CSX early, I mean, with CSX early walking track on August seventh. And we deal in segments, so I maybe I have thought of putting that to.
Okay, uh, I'm not, I'm not. Any motion that you're, say.
Yes, Ken? Yeah, Ron? Yeah, Ken? Yeah. Yes.
Okay, we do committees. Uh. Let's see, we didn't have any, uh, administration, we, uh, hundred comment today. And, uh, that's basically all of that.
Well, in closing minutes. I wanna release last July third's closed session. Over the weekend, there was a lot of information that was mysteriously released, uncertain materials. So I say no reason why that whole week can't be released. So I want that on the agenda for the next meeting. So the only thing I'm gonna point out, um, while some people taking a different position on whether or not that is, um, we're perfectly closely exempt from the session. By giving that vote, you're leaving provisions that you may have. To that material.
Okay, um, and later?
Uh, the meeting's scheduled for Friday. We're talking about the sanitation for, uh, barbers.
Okay. Uh, what time?
Uh, ten five.
Can I, Mom? Uh, emergency matter done?
Uh, nothing other than, I saw the video and the stuff with the drone. It was pretty exciting to see what that capabilities that thing are. Definitely helped. Be able to monitor, other than that, if you want it.
Ron, my answer. Oh, I believe our preparation should be coming out by next meeting.
Keep, keep in mind, there will be a public hearing prior to the regular meeting that night, so we'll, we'll get that published here soon.
Okay, that would be before the, before I have that.
Hey, there is a, there is some grant money for Metro East Park and Recreation. It's a kind of a match grant. So. Question on the forwards, can we use Erica Harris's? Fifty thousand dollars to go towards the match size since our general fund is negative and part negative, correct?
The park fund is negative.
General fund might be flush, but, you know, do you want to spend fifty thousand magic?
General fund is not flush. I, I would have to review the grant that you're looking at to see if we can match it with another grant. That's generally not allowed. But if you forward that to me, I'll, I'll look into it.
Don't forget to look at the one when it comes out the slate, all, because that's the baby, that's where we give our big money.
There's three and a half million dollars to try to figure out. To multiple different communities. Shadow's putting in a new pickleball court, which who doesn't do a slash pad and Mary goes to a pickleball courts. But activities around this town. The other thing, when I ask you to a lot of, you know, walking trails. We stand to leave the finish of that.
Don't worry.
Uh, there's a new Supreme Court ruling that came out. They call up a. Regulation on camping on public property, basically. Illinois Municipal League has come out with a ordinance, a general. I haven't seen, been through that whole ordinance, uh, Brad Cole, executive officer put that out. Um. I would like to, over the next period of time, we'll get that ordinance, look at it, see if that's something we can use here. I know like Collinsville and some of those places, that's, there's a lot of people. I guess you can say homeless or whatever, camping out on the streets, living there, doing whatever. You go into ruler, you go, you know, on clay, you see it all the time in college, so. We've not had a lot, um, a few times of things, but I think we could look at adopting this ordinance. I'm seeing what it entails. Looking forward with it. We just go off by it and all can see what there says. It's kinda what we did with the golf cart one. We came out with that in a way kinda imposter. So just for back toward the Supreme Court ruling, I think it was a Seattle case, I'm, I'm sorry, Washington case. Um, the core of the opinion basically said the government's.
Um, but the core of the, if any, basically said, governments can, um, if they can punish homeless people for, um, camping on, uh, to, to live in the fourth case. Um, and it was a pretty solid opinion, three, I think, so, so they were, they were, um, so the iron all just revoked. Um, not already, the, the building was hit up.
Don't change it or something, I mean, I mean, everything we wanna do, or it's strong what we want to do.
You know, I'm not really taking a position on the.
Right, I don't know what it is, I haven't, so.
But just from an enforcement standpoint, um, Tom, definitely, I've been here. The most we're gonna be able to do is relocate, yeah, lighting the ticket or anything like that is if they go for it, it's not gonna hurt, or it's not gonna help with things, you don't even, you don't even mind, like, so they're, they're a problem, and they're along these lines. So the, the core purpose of the ordinance will really just be to get them removed from. Uh, we won't be back in the, uh, where, uh, where we can try and change it.
No, it's just like if the businesses are, where they camp out in front, and they have, you know, done, made a sidewalk a mess, basically with living there and other toiletry things that have happened there, um, then they.
But there's trespassing notions that are already, yeah, things that, um, well, necessarily need to be not in ordinance for. The order would be more specifically to fight for Adam Village Hall, I mean, I.
I sent the entire board that just happened, when I got, we all got it or not, but it's, it's got a staff of warnings in there for Norman community. Um, and, uh, you know, we could change it as we go, I mean, this is kinda a problem where we can move along the campsite, basically, and a bunch of the dogs, there's a whole lot more kind of moving things, we're in Supreme Court role, but for landowners, if, if, they're, they're giving the power back to the communities to deal with the way they live. You know, they're giving, they're giving us some teeth now to deal with, uh, uh, the homeless issues. So, so something you guys say you wanna handle, but this right now, that has been talking a couple of times, passed by and stuff, and we're living on what we believe, this will give us an option. I just curious you to read it, I, I, I haven't, I just, I, I got, when I, when I got a sentence that you might talk about, I I'm gonna kind of, we had a chief meeting tomorrow, and I'm talking, this is, I'm talking there. So all of that, all of that information, obviously, we got.
It just sort of boards where there's some of the nonprofits in there, they're bringing free business, and the idea of joining the tiny home community. Um, a little gosh, you know, counties that source this one, and that you consider a lot, and you're building one in. Um, and it's meant to provide, um, you know, a year to two years of housing, um, in a time and a moment situation, to provide a stabilizing environment. A part of the person to be, uh, and that you're still allowing, so far, and we know. Just, just to be aware of that.
Okay, Brian, you know anything, John, you have anything small?
Yeah, uh, I guess the bridge is being sold, um, and so, wanna put on the agenda to give them a business license, uh, we just, you know, after background checks, and it's a current, uh, business person here in town, so um, everything should be fine, but it's still being a whole process and you know, have that on the agenda for the next one.
Was it, please, you guys in, please?
I don't, you have to.
Ron, probably. Uh, yeah, Brian, you wanna bring up, uh?
Yeah, but, got a resolution ready for board for, uh, next week, uh, we have two hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars in, in our N S P fund. And I'll let Tamara talk about that a little bit, once I explain that is, uh, what the project is. The new school being built down on Second and Third Street. An agreement that we will approve this rate, so along with that school. Uh, we have two hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars available to us, so I would propose that we would, uh, approve that, uh, the N F T fund, which is different money set aside, I think it's Illinois, Build Illinois Funds.
Build Illinois Funds.
Build Illinois Funds, we've gotta use it by next summer. Um, we can use it for overlays, transportation projects, so I would propose that we overlay Second, Third Streets in Washington do some crosswalk upgrades for the kids there at school, so, um.
I would just elaborate that we've been sitting on this money for a couple of years, it came from the ARPA funds, which probably rings a bell for everyone. And we're approaching the deadline to spend it, so we have to use this by, in less than a year, July first of twenty twenty-five, I think, so it's, uh, timely.
Well, Third Street overlaying that, will that make the peak taller than the new sidewalks that were put in? No, what we do is mill it down, we would, you know, mill it down for the project, and have the engineers from, they'll first.
You had to put that out now, basically, because that's a.
Well, I wanted to bring it to your guys' attention, you don't have any of the said money yet in that area, you know, it hasn't generated money yet, the business history doesn't touch that area, so I thought that was a good use of that money, the general fund and the street department doesn't have that, two hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars in there. This money need to be spent by next summer sometime, uh, if we start the engineering now, and we put it out, we did, through the winter, we'll, we'll and have it by the early spring, yeah, spring letting, and then they start as soon as schools out. Give that document within a week or week and a half, once the contractor comes.
This is really good, that school, they, early August, we, you know, not yet, when that is.
So when you put that on the agenda, and if anybody has any questions about that project, they call me, I'll respond to them.
Okay. David?
Uh, I'm communicating with a resident town, they're interested in trying to start some cleanup projects, get the volunteers, um, everybody in town is interested, and, uh, do a little main street cleanup. Different areas, uh, whether it be down roads, you know, some garden area, whatever it is. And potentially getting something going for the seniors in town, where the seniors get put on the list, you know, they need some yard work done, some stuff in front of their house, if they can't do anymore, or can't afford to hire anybody, so we're trying to collaborate a little bit, and get some other people involved, and try to get something going that's small, to try to help. Clean up all of the town, and then if we get something going, all of the residents is gonna be, be great deal. And if anybody's interested, if nobody's interested, please, have a good job.
Yeah, chairman?
Uh, other man.